Mary may begin when you're ready.
All right. Good evening. I'm Matthews Mayor John Higdon. I'd like to welcome everybody to our September 28th, 2020 Matthews Board of Commissioners meeting. I'll start by reminding everyone that due to Methlumber County's COVID-19 Phase 2.5 Safer at Home order, this meeting of the Matthews Board of Commissioners will be conducted remotely using the Zoom virtual meeting platform. The town of Matthews is committed to transparency and robust public participation during these challenging times. Like to start by introducing some of our participants. We have Commissioner Dave Bland, Commissioner Larry Whitley, Commissioner Jeff Miller, Town Attorney Charlie Buckley, Town Manager Hazen Blodgett, Commissioner John Urban, Commissioner Ken McCool, Assistant Town Manager Becky Hawke, Town Clerk Lori Canapino, Mayor Pro Tem Renee Garner, Our Planning Director Jay Camp, And our Fire and EMS Director, Rob Kennenberg, And our, who's off camera right now, and also our Public Information Officer Maureen Keith is participating. Remind everyone also that the mayor and commissioners will vote tonight on each item by roll call vote, meaning that each member will be polled individually to state their vote for the record, and they will also raise their hand to visually indicate how they're voting. We're gonna start tonight with an invocation. I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Ken McCool.
So I'm gonna start mine with a little thing that I wrote. Just over two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to walk across the Edmund Pettus Bridge in Selma, Alabama. This bridge became the center of the civil rights movement in 1965. I was so moved when I walked across the bridge that I'm compelled during the invocation tonight to give a quote from the late civil rights leader and Congressman John Lewis. This is a quote from John Lewis's memoir Across That Bridge. "Freedom is not a state, it is an act. It is not some enchanted garden perched high on a distant plateau where we can finally sit down and rest. Freedom is the continuous action we must all take, and each generation must do its part to create an even more fair and more just society." During these times of turmoil, it is super important that we as elected officials continue to disavow bigotry, hatred, and racism in our world. We have a unique opportunity to help those who are disenfranchised and make sure we leave future generations with a more equitable future for all.
Thank you, Commissioner McCool, for those wise words. We'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Gonna move on to Agenda Item Number Four. This is to recognize Fire Prevention Week, and I have a proclamation I'd like to read into the record. "Whereas the town of Matthews is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living, working, and visiting in the town of Matthews, and Matthews first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection, education, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,630 people in the United States in 2017, according to the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, and fire departments in the United States responded to 357,000 home fires, and whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, where fire departments responded to more than 1,073,200 annually between 2013 and 2017. And whereas two of every five home fires start in the kitchen with 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking, and more than half have reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fires themselves, whereas children under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire, and whereas Matthews residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch fire away from the stove tops. Whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and working smoke alarms and the risk of dying and reported home fires in half, and whereas Matthews residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety for fire, especially in their homes. Whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen," effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Therefore, I, John F. Higdon, do hereby proclaim October 4th through 10th, 2020, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this state. I urge all the people in the town of Matthews to check their kitchen for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2020, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Matthews Fire and Emergency Services this 28th day of September 2020." So, thank you for that. Like to now move on to Agenda Number Five, and this is to recognize the Matthews Helping Matthews Group. This is a group of individuals in the town that came together back in April. A group of leaders, people I think you know, I'm going to read them by name here. And this, I think, was really formed largely by the efforts of MB, our friend MB. I'm gonna mention some of the folks that participated in this effort, and it was a fundraiser to raise money for our Matthews Help Center. So the participants in alphabetical order by first name were Aksh Patel, Anika Kansahep, Barbara Dement, Barry Steiger, Chris Melton, Jim Taylor, Kelly Trot, Lox Brombott, Lee Myers, Luke Mayberry, Amukshu Brombott, MB, Dobie Thrasher, Paul Bailey, Roland Bebo, Sandra Conway, of course, the leader of the Matthews Help Center, Steve Huff, Tina Whitley, and Dr. Vasant Patel. And you'll notice from that list, we had an unusual group in that we had four either current or former mayors and a few former commissioners in that group, so it was a very diverse group. And I'd like to turn the conversation over tonight to former Mayor Paul Bailey, to say a few words about the group.
Thank you, John, and thank you to the Town Commission for recognizing us this evening. Matthews Helping Matthews started out as really one single item. It was a concern for a situation that MB brought forward, and as we began to discuss that situation, we realized there was a growing need within our community due to the COVID-19 situation. So in early to mid-April, we formed a group of leaders within Matthews and set a goal of $100,000 to be raised and provided to the Matthews Help Center so that they could distribute it about the community in an efficient manner, and that those who were in need could reach out to them and have their issues addressed. The process really got underway full force in about mid-May, and through the efforts of the group, through advertising, Facebook, social media, anything that we could find, we were able to to reach out to the people of Matthews. And it's phenomenal to me with the amount of money that we raised, how the people in our community truly do care about the nonprofits, they truly do care about those in need in our community, and I can't say enough for all the nonprofits and the people in this town who just open their hearts up and do so much for our community. So, thank you, John. Thank you, Council, and I'd like to turn it over to Jim Taylor.
You're on mute, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I thought Lori was gonna do that for the group, but I I'm now live and I appreciate it. Thank you all very much. As Paul alluded to, this started back in around April, and it was an amazing, very ambitious task. MB contacted a number of us and said he wanted to do something for the community, and none of us really knew what the ask was going to be at first. We started throwing around some numbers. We had an initial goal of $10,000 within a week, and we were able to accomplish that, and we figured we'll just keep on going. And we decided that, as a collective group, we decided that $100,000 was a stretch goal. And quite frankly, that is a serious stretch goal in these days when everybody is dealing with situations. But through many, many efforts by many, many people, we were very, very successful in getting toward, you know, working towards that goal. And I'll tell you what the numbers are here as I go, but I do want to thank a whole bunch of people. I do want to thank everybody on what MB's been calling the Leadership Group. These individuals, which Paul, excuse me, John read the names out of those individuals, every one of them not only put their time, effort, and heart behind trying to raise money for the Help Center, but put their dollars in their wallets behind it as well. So I think that really said an awful lot, says an awful lot about how passionate we all were as an organization, or as a very volunteer group organization to make this actually a reality. But there was a tremendous amount of support from other groups, and I'm gonna name some of them because some of them are very important, and they're very important to our larger, greater Matthews community. Our first large donation really came from a group of physicians that were on the front line of COVID and are still on the front line of COVID, dealing with all the medical issues that are surrounding it and seeing it firsthand, and that was the Charlotte, the Greater Charlotte Area Physicians of Indian Origin. They had a presentation and gave a check to Sandra, and that was really the start of our our successful efforts. BAPS Charities, UPS Store in Matthews, Papa Murphy's Pizza gave some gift cards to the Help Center to give out to their clients. That was one of our in-kind donations. We can't forget some of the partners that we go through or go to, excuse me, routinely to do things in the town of Matthews, Novant, Atrium, Harris Teeter, the Matthews Women's Club, those women are phenomenal, and they're struggling as well because they're not gonna be able to do their fundraisers. The annual Christmas teas are not gonna be taking place at the Reed House this year because of COVID, but yet they got, they banded together and were able to donate, I believe, around $1,000 worth of food in this effort to the Help Center to give out to their clients. The Matthews Playhouse, tremendous partner. Again, they're struggling for dollars for their activities, yet they partnered with us and very generously gave some of their proceeds to this effort, and we were extremely grateful and thanked them for that. Sweetwater Logistics is a company here in Matthews. They gave a large in-kind donation of some women's apparel and some children's car seats and the like. That was very well appreciated, and Sandra and company are able to tap into those resources and get them on an as-needed basis, so that is tremendous. Some of the many wonderful churches that are in our community, and I, forgive me, I hope to gosh, I do not forget anybody here, but Elevation Church, Crown, Cross and Crown, Ridge Church, Christ Covenant Church, Matthews United Methodist.
Jim, you're muted.
The Myers Law Firm, Bud Law Firm. Excuse me, we had a technical issue there. I do want to thank some members of the board personally because you actually came through and were behind this effort from the very beginning. Mr. Higdon, thank you for being part of the leadership team, as MB calls it, but not only that, but going out and helping us in the community. Mr. Urban, Mr. Bland, and Mr. Blodgett, thank you all very much for being a part of this campaign. Every single dollar went right to the clients of the Help Center, and they were corporate, there were corporate donations, there were churches, like I said, foundations, personal, there were youth leaders, and MB will probably talk about many of the youth leaders in the community that went out and got small multiples of small donations, and that was amazing. I do want to say from a donation standpoint, we had every spectrum across the board. We had, our smallest donation was $15. Our largest donation was $8,000. So from 15 to 8,000, that entire spectrum across the board. And our in-kind donations, we had as little as $150 in in-kind donations come through and as high as $10,000 in-kind donations. And I'm very pleased. Many of you probably were in conversations or heard it through the grapevine that our goal was to make this $100,000 by Labor Day. And we had a meeting every Tuesday, and the Tuesday before the Labor Day weekend, I had the unsatisfactory news of reporting to the group that we were approximately $15,000 short, give or take. And we were gonna have to make a mad push and effort to make our goal. I was very pleased to tell the group the following Tuesday that we met our $100,000 goal at 6:00 PM on Labor Day. So we were very thrilled to be able to do that, but as I had said many times before, the dollars did not stop there. This group has really set the foundation for dollars to come. And I'm gonna give you a new number here. I will tell you that you all have a check, or many of you have a check in front of you, and we're gonna use that for a presentation in a little bit. I'm gonna leave that to MB. The number on that check has slightly changed, and I'm gonna share that with you in a minute, but it just says that the hearts of the people in Matthews are even that much bigger. I do want to tell you that we made, we made up, I said we were about $15,000 short going into the last week. We actually made up just shy of $19,000 in that last week. We met our goal, like I said, at 6:00 PM on Labor Day, but by midnight of Labor Day, we were already at $103,000. We do have some feelers out there for some foundations and some organizations that we think as a group are going to come through and make this number even higher than it is today. Some organizations give their charitable giving during the fourth quarter of the year, and we're eagerly looking for those numbers to come in, but Lori, I'm gonna share my screen here really quick, and somebody would just tell me if you can see my screen once I pull it up. Let's see here. It's not gonna be, can you see like a blank screen?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all very much. I'm gonna hit a button here, and you're gonna see what the actual number is as of today. We made an awful lot of dollars or were able to attract an awful lot of dollars through the GoFundMe page, but we also directed a number of people to go directly to the Help Center and give their donations by check with noting in the memo section, the Matthews Helping Matthews campaign. Then we had the in-kind, and we have one pending donation, which is coming from the Matthews Police Department. The wonderful Matthews Police Department reached out to me about three weeks ago, three or four weeks ago, and said that they were putting together a charitable or charity softball tournament between the their agency, other agencies, and some church organizations in the area, and they wanted the entire proceeds from that fundraiser to go to our Matthews Helping Matthews and the Matthews Help Center campaign. So that is coming down the pike. Unfortunately, that event has been postponed. I'm not gonna say canceled, it's been postponed, and I've been in contact with the police officers, and they are going to continue that pledge. So when the tournament does take place, I'm guessing now probably in the spring, those funds will be forwarded to the Matthews Help Center. So with a little bit of a drumroll here, we are, as of this evening, those checks you have in front of you, like I said, are no longer valid from the now standpoint, but here we go. We have $110,000 plus in donations that have come through, so that does deserve a round of applause. I do want to break it down for you really quickly to show you how that spectrum came about. We had a little over $21,000 come in through our GoFundMe page, and a little over $74,000 directly was sent to the Help Center. Again, the in-kind donations that I spoke of earlier, Harris Teeter gift cards, pizza cards, Sweetwater Logistics donation, et cetera, all that was a little over $13,500, $13,600, as you can see on the screen. And then the pending $500 is what we anticipate will be the proceeds from the Matthews Police Department charitable charity softball tournament when it does take place. So we've got a traceable or a trackable number of a little over $96,000 in cash. $500, excuse me, $500 still pending, $13,650 in the in-kind donations. Again, bringing us to a grand total as of today, just over $110,000. So with that, I'm going to say thank you to everybody in this community. I said it a number of times on social media, and our wonderful social media director, Chris Melton, did a phenomenal job. When we ask people in Matthews, and this was very evident, I'm sure the other mayors on this call will agree with me, when we ask the citizens of the town of Matthews what we need or what that we have an ask out there, or we need help, they come through in droves. I witnessed it firsthand when the library hours were cut many years ago, and we had we had very well-qualified people volunteering their time, their talents, and their efforts to make sure the library survived. And here we are again, giving, we asked for donations, and we have $110,000. So to everybody that contributed, thank you, thank you, thank you to the Matthews community, the greater Matthews community and the Help Center. Thank you for allowing us to do this on your behalf. We were privileged to be able to achieve the goal. I have to admit, it was a stretch goal to me at the very beginning, and I was very pleased that we were able to make it and exceed it. And with that, I will be, I'll be quiet and go back and turn the meeting back over to Mr. Higdon, which I think has some comments from our leader in this whole thing of MB. So, John, thank you.
That's correct. Thank you, Jim. Yes, MB, would you have some comments, sir?
Well, I just wanted to congratulate all of the community. In fact, in the beginning, when I reached out, we'd never had any clear goal except the goal of helping our community. And I've been approached also by asking that, are you interested in opening any nonprofit? And I said, no, I have a full-time business, and in fact, a whole family today with me today joining. So here's my wife, Hemma, Laksh, majority of you know that has helped, and Ishani. So in fact, this group of Matthews Helping Matthews, it just reminds me of a quote, and not just the quote, but entire life, my spiritual leader named Pramukh Swami, who has lived until his last breath in 2016, "In joy of others lies our own." So that reminded me that when we've been hearing a lot of negativity into the community since February and early March, pandemic, COVID-19, coronavirus, and of course, Black Lives Matters, and that begin into pitching in, and of course, that turning into the riots and so forth, high unemployment number, business not doing so well, and of course, they're having a lot of rules and regulations for masks and distance and so forth. But the people in the frontliner, as the mayor said earlier, that healthcare workers been helping to the people for the physical health, but a lot of people has hurted their bank accounts. So what do we do with that? And that has to do with a lot of other issues, as we know. So then, when I come to know all this hardship in our community, I reached out to the people that I knew, and these people open-handedly never asked me any question. They just trusted that this will come, and as we walked, we maneuvered, we never had a straight strategy, but one strategy was there to truly help our people in our community. And that is how the Matthews Helping Matthews has chosen Matthews Help Center because they're specifically designed to do this task. They have infrastructure ready to help, and we not being a nonprofit, we needed somebody to legally handle the donation that will be received. So it's truly not, I don't want to credit just Matthews Helping Matthews team, but I want to credit to all of the commissioners, all of the members who donated for the community members. And honestly, this is a four-month or a little over four-month effort. It's hard to express my feeling or my group's feeling in a two-minute segment, but I don't want to take further time. But truly, this town has given me bread and butter, and this was my time. I didn't want to part of just advising what country should do, what others should do, what governors should do, what presidents should do, or what mayor should do. But in fact, I thought, what can we do to help out the people who really, really needing, and they may not come straight to us for asking the help? And as you are politicians sitting into the office, also serving the same purpose. So that's why I'm thanking all of the commissioners that are doing day in, day out, caring for the community. So truly appreciate all effort for the member of the community, people who donated from their pocket, and especially the people who has donated big too, and small amount also contributed to this cause. And I just want to leave with the quote of my current spiritual leader. He keeps saying about the message of unity. His name is Man Swami Maharaj, but unity is not like I keep unity or somebody keeps unity to me, but even somebody will not keep the unity. It's my job to keep that unity, and it's my responsibility to keep that unity. Even if it is a single-sided unity, we should do that for our community, and that's the love, that's the passion that I always as a child, but this was an opportunity, and without any name, all these people have supported this cause. So, and Matthews Helping Matthews is not just going to end here. It will get evolved, and it will also help other charities into the local area in the future or different causes to communities. So a small seed of Matthews Helping Matthews today has become a big tree, big brand. Again, there is no other pre-agenda for this group, only to the love and for the community and help to the community, and that is all. And I have a last small check, and if everybody can raise their check so we can present to Matthews Helping Matthews. And I'm sorry, some of you may not have it. Some of you may get the letter, but I just want to, on behalf of my team, I want Sandra and Mayor Lee Myers, you being the board of Matthews Help Center, we try to donate this check to you, and in fact, the bigger check, and once again, I appreciate all of you, and thank you so much. This has been a humbling process and experience for the last four months for me and all these fellow leaders. And once again, I appreciate direct support from commissioner, indirect support for commissioners too. So without you and proper township and proper having the platform for us to do, this wasn't possible. And this is a big, big milestone for Matthews. So once again, thank you so much to everybody.
Thank you. Well, thank you, MB. I'd like to say that MB certainly kept the group encouraged with actually daily words of encouragement, and I think we plateaued a couple times, and it was always good to have that daily words of encouragement from MB, so thank you, sir. I would like to give an opportunity for Sandra Conway to say a few words, if you like, as the recipient of this funds, and as we wrap this up, I want to say that this is really all about a recognition, not only of the team that worked on it, but really a recognition of all those that donated to make this amount possible. That's what we really appreciate. I know that Jim read a lot of those names off. Many people specifically asked to remain anonymous, but we're thankful for everybody that donated. Sandra, would you like to say a few words?
Gosh, yeah, absolutely. Just on behalf of the entire Matthews Help Center family, we are just so grateful to everybody's time and effort to bring in all these donations that we can help all these families. Each and every one of you are making everything that we do possible. So thank you for making a difference in the lives of our neighbors. We would not have been able to give out over $92,000 during the month of August without the support of our community, and we are just so grateful. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Sandra. Before this large group logs off, I want to mention one other thing that I normally would say during my mayor's report, and that's that we have another, I guess, opportunity that looms before us, and that's the State Farm Neighborhood Assist Grant that many in this group are also pushing. For those of you that aren't familiar with it, For those of you that aren't familiar with it, you can find out more information at neighborhoodassist.com. And every year, State Farm picks or takes by vote forty, the forty most popular causes nationally and awards twenty-five thousand dollars to each one. And so you do this by voting. There's two hundred on the neighborhoodassist.com site. And the last time I checked, a few hours ago, the, the folks that we're hoping get this award this year, Cause Kids, the Child Development Campus, was number forty-eight. So they're a little bit outside of the top forty. You can vote up to ten times a day, but it's just one keystroke. It just takes a second. And the voting stops this Friday. So if everybody on this call can tell your friends and family to go do that, you may be aware that Cause Kids' mission addresses two of the key determinants of addressing income inequality, and that's early care and education and family and child stability. So they're doing some really good work in our community. So please remind folks again to check out neighborhoodassist.com and, and vote often, at least in this effort. So thank you to the, to the team that joined tonight and we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you.
Thanks, all.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number six, receive an update on COVID-19 from Emergency Operations Center Commander Rob Kennenberg.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I, I don't quite know how to follow that, but I'd also like to thank MB and his group. They've helped out with our PPE shortage early on in our efforts against COVID. So we're very grateful too. Today is day number two-hundred-and-two officially dealing with COVID here in Mecklenburg County. As of ten o'clock this morning, we had twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-seven cases with three hundred and fifty-six deaths. As you're aware, we did move into phase two point five on September fourth, which allowed greater occupancy numbers and attendance, both indoors and outdoors. We are expecting an announcement from the governor this week that will either ease some of the restrictions or move us into some form of phase three. We really don't know at this point. Again, looking at a fourteen-day average, case counts are up about five point six percent, which reflects a slightly higher increase than my previous report. Deaths have increased about five percent as well. Our testing seems to have increased also with an average of twenty-nine hundred tests and ninety-six new cases each day for a positivity rate of three point three, which is very good. We continue to see a decline in the average number of patients hospitalized with COVID and a very sharp decline in the number of patients who need ventilators. This may be a short term, but yet a very positive sign. Hospitalizations with COVID are at its lowest point since May. Social distancing continues to improve slightly. We're currently at forty. Our best was early on when the stay-at-home order was issued. Currently, we have residents in isolation in forty-two locations. And we're happy to say that plantation estates has overcome their battle with COVID and they are COVID-free. We continue to distribute masks to town residents as part of the county's plan to distribute a million masks. The fire department returned to pre-COVID EMS dispatch protocols, which has, uh, we've seen a corresponding increase in our call volume. First responders and emergency services are stable. But just last week, we saw how one exposure could wipe out an entire shift. We appreciate Novant's assistance in getting an entire shift tested in order to keep them at work that day. We do have the first known impact of COVID at a school in the area. An outbreak was reported at a local private school. Source tracking and isolation precautions have been implemented by that school. In response to schools, Matthews has implemented a learning pod at Cruz Road. And we have several town, children of town residences studying there under the watchful eye of Park and Rec. Big questions coming forward. Again, will the improvements continue or will we see the supposed spike? Will we move into phase three or modify phase two point five? Protests and unrest continue to increase across the nation and are expected to do so through November, which may have an impact on COVID. And election-related activity may have an impact on COVID. But the Board of Elections says they're ready and we will be monitoring the four locations around Matthews for compliance with social distancing and masks, although we have no enforcement, we'll be there anyway. So that, that is the end of my report for this week and I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you, Rob. Do we have any questions or comments? Mayor Pro Tem Garner.
Chief Kennenberg, last time I asked you about Halloween and I've noticed since then that the CDC has come out with guidelines for Halloween. But I believe Mayor Higden and I were both on a call recently with the state health department. And they seem to be tweaking their guidelines. So I would expect to know something from them, I guess, in the near future.
I, I think at this point, they're waiting to see what this week's announcement from the governor is. Mecklenburg County Health Department is, is aware of the desire for information about Halloween. So we're going to hopefully see what the, the governor has to say this week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Garner for reminding us of, of that meeting to give a snapshot of what was said at that time. And it is being tweaked as, as Mayor Pro Tem Garner said. They were happy to report that Halloween won't be canceled necessarily. But they are discouraging things like having a, a large bowl that kids dig in to get candy. Obviously, that wouldn't be good. So you would spread the candy out on a table or something like that. And they're also discouraging large groups of children going together. So I'm sure there'll be some additional guidelines coming out, but the good news is for our, the children in town, there's no, the plans of canceling. A lot of the church organizations do things like trunk-or-treat where they have trunks of cars full of candy and they're not recommending that as well for obvious reasons. They want to spread the candy out. So in a church, you might place candy in parking spaces or something like that to spread, spread the children out where they're not right on top of each other. But there will be additional guidelines forthcoming and, and the good news is at least for now, Halloween or trick-or-treating, as we know, it won't be, won't be canceled. Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Kennenberg? Okay, seeing not, thank you, chief. We'll move on to agenda item number seven. I am aware of one item that needs to be added to the agenda under unfinished business. We're going to receive an update from NC DOT on South Trade Street construction from Brian Davis.
That is on the agenda, Mr. Mayor. That was just not on your feed.
I'm sorry?
That item is on the agenda.
Okay, it is on there. All right. Is there anything else, Manager Blodgett? We have anything else to add, sir?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment, agenda item number eight. Lori, do we have anybody that signed up for public comment tonight?
There are no public comments tonight.
Move on to agenda item number nine, the consent agenda. Before we vote on the consent agenda, I would like to ask Commissioner Whitley if you've got nine E one resolved, the sixty thousand dollars. You had a question about that?
I got it. Hazen gave it to me today.
Hazen, can you share with the group that items, just so we're all clear?
Yes, so that, that is a fund, CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds that we received from the Council of Government. Sometime back, we just didn't properly put it into the, I guess, budget form. And so we are, we are recognizing it and appropriating it tonight. That's what the budget amendment will do.
All right, I would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda if there's no questions.
I'll make that motion, Mayor, for consent agenda A through E two that we approve.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion from Commissioner Whitley, a second from Commissioner Miller. We'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Bland?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitley?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Sure.
Commissioner McCool?
Yes.
I vote affirmative as well. So that passes unanimously. We'll move on to agenda item number ten. Unfinished business and that discrepancy is I have a slightly earlier agenda than perhaps some of you do. But we'll go on to ten A, consider funding for Sam Newell Road side path. Susan Habina-Willard.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Good to see everyone tonight. We bring before you tonight Sam Newell Road Multi-Use Path. It is a project that has, is on the step, has received some funding. We have gotten through twenty-five percent designs and public involvement. And as you know, the North Carolina Department of Transportation has suspended work on almost all of their projects, including projects such as this, which we, we call locally administered projects. That means the town is managing the project. We pay the bills and then we ask for reimbursement. State's not even doing reimbursements, however. Due to, you know, some communities have requested the ability to do what we're calling deferred reimbursement. That says, hey, we'll pay for it and then whenever you can, please pay us back. And so the, the state is doing a little bit better financially and they're willing to entertain this option. A limited amount is being made available to our region. And staff would like to request that the board agree to do this deferred reimbursement option for Sam Newell Multi-Use Path. It's tough to lose momentum when we get going on a project. And to, to pause it at this point, we really would like the ability to move forward with preliminary engineering phase. And what that means is that we currently have a consultant contract for three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ten for preliminary engineering. Of that amount, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand has already been spent. And we would like to move forward through this phase and then get our reimbursement back in October of twenty-twenty-one. So that would be a year down the road. Unfortunately, this is a very time-sensitive request. If the town is interested in participating in the deferred reimbursement program for this project, we have to apply to CRTPO by Wednesday. So the financial impact, there's really none at this time because we already have the funds encumbered. It's just a matter of not getting paid back quarterly like we typically do, that we would get paid back in October, when those funds are going to be October next year, when the funds are going to be made available by NC DOT. So tonight, the requested action my staff has authorized the town manager to petition the CRTPO to proceed with the contract for Sam Newell Multi-Use Path for the design consultants on a deferred reimbursement. Any questions?
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. Susan, I just have a simple, basic question. Will it be, is it gonna be on the south or the southeast side? Which if you're going towards Margaret Wallace would be on the right, is that the preferred side?
It is on the left side. The preliminary plans show it on the left side.
Won't that take out a ton of trees and require, because of the steepness, won't that require a lot of trees to get cut down and retaining walls?
That's a good question. You know, there's pros and cons to both sides. The east side has a major utility line running through it. The west side does have a little bit of grade issues, but only one parcel requires a wall. And the trees, there's one parcel that has a big stand of trees. That parcel has been sold and is going to be developed. Current plans are developed into single-family homes and those would be taken down anyway. So there are, there's a little bit of tree removal and we'll, of course, do the best we can to preserve any trees that we can during construction.
Can you, can't we put a greenway or a multi-use path under utility lines? Duke has indicated they would cooperate with us in the past.
Think the, the issue being the poles would be, are at the exact offset that we would prefer to have multi-use path.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Just to Commissioner Miller's point, I think the, having it on the side that they haven't planned for, it'll tie into the Urbans Creek Greenway. So it'll be more of a continuous greenway than it would if it were on the other side as well.
The connection to Urban Street Greenway where it reaches Samuel is on the west side where it comes out underneath by the school property. And then would come, so it'd become, you know, around where that kind of is like a parking area right there. On the east side, there's a steep embankment. And so the connection over to the greenway on the east side would be on, because I read.
Thank you. Any other questions for Susan? Any motions? Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
I'll make a motion to fund the Sam Newell side path. Let me get my, with a deferred reimbursement from NC DOT scheduled for October two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Okay.
We have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Garner, second from Commissioner Urban. We'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Bland?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I had to put the lap unmuted, sorry. Yes.
I think I read your lips. It was affirmative. Yes, okay. Commissioner Whitley?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner McCool?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that passes unanimously. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Move on to item ten B, receive an update on South Trade Street construction from NC DOT's Brian Davis.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, um, I believe when, when I last talked to y'all in July, the, the goal was to have Trade Street in its, in its final pattern by now. And, and I'm sure as, as most of y'all have been able to see that, that has not happened yet. And I guess to, to, uh, first of all, I will, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll give you a new schedule. The, the new schedule is that we will, we are probably looking at these, the, the items that, that I, that I told you about before. And if, and if you don't remember, I will, I've, I've got those here. In order to do that, we will need to, to complete a twenty-four-inch water line, which we have done. We will need to complete the storm drain that is on the southbound side of trade. The curb and gutter on the southbound side of trade will need to be poured in that asphalt and complete the asphalt widening there that's behind the temporary barrier, barrier wall that is up. Plus, we would put in the sidewalk and handrail and, and put up guard rail. And that would be, if, if we could do those things, we would be, we would consider Trade Street in its final pattern. We are probably looking in the, in, in another two to two and a half months. Unfortunately, we've had a lot of problems completing that twenty-four-inch water line. The, the first item that is, that was to be completed. Now that is, that is done, that is tied in and, and we are moving forward. We also have a new plan for the sewer line. That was one of the items that was going to For the sewer line, that was one of the items that was going to take place after we put trade street in its final pattern. However, I believe what I told you before, it was, we had a different plan in how that sewer line was going to be installed. And I believe in July, what I had said was the, the sewer line was going to be installed either by Morden Jack or we were going to have to hand tunnel it, which would take approximately six months to complete. However, our contractor has has had a new proposal, which Charlotte Water has approved and is now, as we speak, being implemented. So I believe I had a, a timeframe of spring of 2021 for our project completion. And project completion has now been moved up to, it could possibly be done by the end of the year. And if not at the end of the year, it would be, it would be, excuse me, at the first of 2021. So that is good news. As we said, I know, I know we are, we are still a couple of years late in delivering that project. But it is, that was a, a nice surprise that, that to find out that we were able to, to to use the existing encasement that is going under Trade Street to to install the new sewer line. So. For the final pattern, I'm still thinking, like I said, about two to two and a half months. So that would put us around November, maybe Thanksgiving. But that would probably relieve a lot of the congestion problems. And, and you would, you would, you would really see the, the project taking shape and, and getting close to completion at that point. Does anybody have any, any questions?
Yep. Brian, our credibility with the public and the elected officials has been stretched to where they don't believe anything we say. And now you're telling us that November, December, can, can we take that to the bank and go once again to the public and say, well, we've been delayed, but, but really this time it's going to be done by the end of the year because our, our emails and phone calls and text messages have gone from wild inconvenience to extreme frustration and to where they're holding us accountable for this. And it's been going on for way too long. I, can you assure us that this is a very top priority and that you're going to get it done by the end of the year?
Well, Mr. Mayor, it is a very top priority. I would I would, I would very much like to, to say, take that to the bank. And I, I believe that, that that is that is something that the contractor that is out there is capable of doing. You know, I, I won't say that this project has not been loaded with pitfalls because it has. But yes, I'm, I'm pretty confident that that is, you know, final pattern, you know, sometime, I, I would say definitely the final pattern sometime this, this calendar year with the, with, with the overall project completion being early 2021.
Any other comments or questions from the, from the board? Mayor Pro Tim Garner?
Is this still the contractor that's getting fined $1,000 a day for their overdue? The overdue state of the project?
That is correct.
Okay, well, it seems like every time I drive past there, which is maybe once or twice a week, so it's not that much. But I'm sure that Commissioner Miller could state this more. I don't see anybody working. You know, I guess I'm, I'm cynical because I remember sitting in council meetings last year and hearing that, you know, the, the project would be finished by the fall of last year, but I haven't seen an uptick in work. So is somebody from DOT out there observing and making sure that they're actually doing the work they say they're doing?
Yes, we, we do have, you know, an inspector there that is there when the contractor is there. It is you know, NCDOT does not direct their work. You know, we, we don't, we don't dictate how many crews or how much equipment show up to the project and things like that. The, the main safeguard that we have to, to make sure that a project gets done on time are those liquidated damages, which they are the to date, they would be around four, $450,000 somewhere in that neighborhood.
Does that increase anymore throughout the process?
The, the, the thousand dollars a day? No, it did not.
Who sees that money, Brian?
The state of North Carolina. And we usually, we usually, what we, what we normally do that, how, how we normally do that is we just we, we do not pay them their full estimate. Normally, we are, we are holding that, you know, so a thousand dollars a day, they're, they're paid monthly. Normally, we are holding 30 grand, you know, a, a month from them to, you know, from their, from their pay estimate. So it's, it's not like we, we, we ask for a, you know, $400,000 check at the end. We, we are collecting this as we get.
Well, if they don't finish pretty soon, they're going to have to pay us for the privilege of building it, it would seem.
We, we, Mayor Higgin, we were very close to that point, I believe.
I, I would like to say that I will concur with Mayor Pro Tim Garner's comments. I live right up the street, as does Commissioner Miller, and I rarely see anybody on site more than two or three employees. So it's hard, it's hard to reckon how that's a priority if we don't see anybody working, but I'll take you at your word and.
Well, the, like I said, the, the water line that had, that, that gave us such a fit. I mean, you should have, you should have seen people out there working. I mean, it, it's probably not going to be, you know, it, it's probably not going to be more than four or five guys and, and, and most of those guys are going to be down in a trench. But, but you, you should see people, you should see folks working out there. And, and then, and then, you know, the majority of the work, I would say in the last couple of weeks, has still, has still been, you know, down near the culvert, you know, well off the shoulders, down in that ravine. And so those, those were, that's where the work has, has taken place now because they, they have started to set up to, to install the new sewer line, which is still that is still considered a long lead item. And, and some of that work has to be, has to be done on the surface, you know, up on top where you would see. And so we would like, we, we would like to get them to a certain point in that construction where they are not running equipment on top of the grade. Because if, if they are running equipment on top of the grade, they will tear up the new asphalt and we'll have to do it again. So, you know, I, I know that I'm asking you guys a lot, but please bear with us and feel free, Mayor Higgin and Hazen, to forward any and all calls to my office. And you, you guys have my number and, and email.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Garner. Did you have another comment?
I did, but Hazen raised his hand a couple of times before I did, so.
So, so obviously, this is Hazen. I, I think, you know, I know you're part of DOT. And I know it's a big organization, but I think you guys have to understand, people reach out to us, the town board, because they are the government to those folks. And they think the board can handle any non-public or any public problem. And, and so we try very hard to help. In other words, we'll say two and a half months or we'll, you know, we try to help you guys, but it does hurt our credibility when we put the word out. And, and the feeling, Brian, is that it like DOT just kind of keeps its head down. And Matthews is like our heads up, trying to watch the community, respond to the community, and our head kind of gets whatever picked on a little bit. So my ask would be, you guys do have a PIO at Division 10. I would like to see something come out from PIO that maybe we can tag. But it, you know, y'all got to lead this effort because it's y'all's contractor. I really don't think it's fair that the Matthews, whether it's staff or more elected officials in staff, kind of gets picked on. You guys got to take the lead and just to be fair, really just to be fair about it.
Thank you, Adrian.
Well, Brian, do you agree or what, what's your response to that?
Well, I mean, I could, I could certainly mention that to Jim. I, I think, I think before the July meeting, I, I think that was something that you guys requested and, and I did, I did mention that to Jim. And, and I think I, I think at the time, you know, that the Communications Office did not want to put out, you know, an updated press release about that. But I, I certainly will mention again and I'll bring it to Brett's attention. And so, you know, I, I certainly certainly do not want you guys to feel slighted here. And, and it sounds like you definitely are. And, you know, we don't we, we certainly aren't putting our head in the sand here. So I will, I will definitely, you know, I'll, I'll mention that to Brett. I'll get, I'll get, you know, his feedback. And you know, we, we certainly get back with, with you and or Maureen and, and you guys and, and kind of, kind of go from there. Perhaps, perhaps that is the best thing to do.
It's definitely the right thing to do and we would appreciate any, any teamwork on this.
I, I can say, Brian, that I, I think I speak for the entire board. I think we have lost our credibility because we can only go back to the public so many times and say it's going to be two and a half more months, three more months, two more months, more months. After a couple of years, you know, they stop believing, believing us. So it's kind of rough. And, and this has gone beyond just being an inconvenience. There's actually been some development projects in this corridor that are being affected by the perceived traffic issues in this area that probably would be lessened quite a bit if this was open. So it's, it's actually, you know, rolled over into affecting possible development in the community as well. So beyond just an inconvenience, it's a, it's a real headache. So anything you guys can do to make sure it gets done, we'd really appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And I, and I appreciate you coming to, to speak to a somewhat hostile crowd tonight, but we appreciate you coming and give us an update. So thank you.
That's quite all right. Thank you all.
All right, we'll move on. If there's no other questions, I don't see any, to our monthly budget report, item 11A from Ms. Beth Blair.
Yes, good evening. For the first two months of the year, July and August, as you well know, there's not much to report this early on because our major revenue streams taxes haven't come in yet. But our results to date are consistent with our historical results. The one thing of note I wanted to mention, we significantly reduced the budget for our investment revenue in the budget to 70,000. Last year, we received 234,000. But per the Council of the North Carolina Management Trust, where we have our investments, they gave us projections of what to expect. And that's how we came up with the 70,000. But year to date, we've only received 1,600. So I'm, if, if this continues, which I expect it will because the Federal Reserve at its recent committee meeting recommitted to interest rates at near zero for foreseeable future. So we may only realize 10,000 of our 70,000 budgeted revenue for this year, which would be a shortfall of 60,000, but that's 60,000 on a 2.4 million, 20, I'm sorry, 24.6 million budgeted revenue. So it's not good news, but it's not going to be as significant to the overall budget. And our expenditures are greater than revenue for the first two months by 3 million in the general fund and about 120,000 in the tourism fund again, which is consistent with this time of year. So that's all I have unless there are any questions.
Beth, I have a question. Are, are our hands tied by state statute regarding, do we have to go ultra, ultra, ultra conservative, you know, bonds that are earning .01% interest? Is that what we have to invest in?
Yes. It is.
It's safe, but it's, you know, the stock market has done fairly well. I know we're not going to go roll the dice with stock market, but it seems like we're being so ridiculously conservative that we're guaranteeing that I'm not going to lose any money, but we're certainly not going to get any either.
That's correct. Yes, unfortunately.
But that, that is a requirement by state. That's not something the town of Matthews could go slightly more
Yes.
Conservative.
That's correct.
Any other questions for, for Beth tonight regarding the budget? Okay, seeing done, we'll move on. Thank you, Beth. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Consider adoption of Mecklenburg County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Boy, that's a mouthful. Chief Kinnenberg.
Good evening, Council. You have the Jay is queuing up the screen. You have the memo in your packet. I'll, I'll just give you the highlights. The Town of Matthews has been participating in the Mecklenburg County Hazard Mitigation Planning Process since 2000. The process is required by federal law to qualify for grant dollars. For the, the most part, the program looks to help reduce issues which would lead to natural disasters. As I said, Matthews has been part of the plan since 2000. The plan has been rewritten or updated every five years. So we are, we are finalizing or have submitted for approval, the 2025 or 2020 edition of the Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Again, that's a mouthful. I included a link in the memo, but the, the plan is almost 400 pages in length. So to give you some highlights of areas where the plan addresses action by the town or in our planning processes, includes the development of a town EOC and backup communications for police and fire, floodplain management and mapping, equipment, equipping public facilities with backup power and retrofitting those facilities with sustainable elements, stormwater management efforts, fire protection, infrastructure maintenance and mapping, training and exercise for town staff, public education regarding self-reliance during weather-related incidents, increasing public works debris removal capability and the exploration of joint efforts among the south towns for a improved public safety answering point for the police department. After I sent you the memo later, late today, I did receive a, a copy of the, the finalized action plans. Again, there, there are steps for us to consider in our planning efforts, but they are not concrete steps that force the council to do any specific action. So I would move that council adopt the resolution adopting the 2020 Hazard Mitigation Plan. The aim here is to do approval by the jurisdictions while the document is in review by FEMA. It's already been reviewed and approved by the state. So that way we won't have to have an interim plan after we get it back from FEMA. after we get it back from FEMA.
All right, thank you, Chief Kinnenberg. Do we have any questions for Rob? I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Urban.
Sure, I'll go ahead and do that. Uh, let's go ahead and make a motion that we recommend adoption of the twenty twenty Mecklenburg County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and agree to take such other official actions as may be reasonable to carry out the proposed actions of that plan. Per uh, Chief Kinnerborough's memo dated September twenty first, twenty twenty.
I'll second that, Mayor. Hey, we had a motion from Commissioner Urban, a second from Commissioner Whitley. We'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Bland.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitley.
Yes.
Commissioner Urban.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Garner.
Yes.
Commissioner McCool.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
I vote yes, so that passes unanimously. Thank you, Rob. Move on to agenda item eleven C. Uh, consider pursuing bonus allocation for Graylock Ridge Road Extension. Susan, I've been alert again.
Hello again, everyone. Um, and just a second, let me see if I can get my slideshow started. All right, good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. I am excited to be speaking to you night, tonight about a unique transportation funding opportunity. Typically, you would see our transportation planner Dana Stojinki presenting an item like this. Unfortunately, she can't be here tonight. It's Yom Kippur. And she says, Shana Tava, which is like a holiday greeting. And of course, we want to support the cultural diversity of our staff and therefore you're stuck with me presenting again on a transportation item this evening. Uh, Dana has been searching for ways to get a critical piece of our roadway network, uh, Graylock Ridge Road Extension funded and has found this unique opportunity. Before we talk money, though, it's always good to start out with a reminder of where we are in Matthews. We're talking about a street. So here it is. Graylock Ridge Road is a neighborhood street off of East John Street, just west of I four eighty five. The extension of this neighborhood street provides some much needed connectivity for this area of town. It would cross East John Street, then cross at grade with the CSX Railroad, right where the East Charles Street and Tanktown Crossing is, and then extending to connect with future Independence Point Parkway near the Sportsplex. Steph has segmented this extension into three parts as shown on the diagram. Segment A from John Street to Charles Street. Segment B from Charles to Tanktown, that includes the railroad crossing. And then segment C from Tanktown across Matthews School Road and to Independence Point Parkway. Uh, why has Dana been actively seeking this money? Well, it's not just about the connectivity, but also this section of roadway has been important to the town for a while. In twenty thirteen, it was adopted into the Joint Matthews Stallings Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Subsequently, in twenty fourteen, the town engaged the services of an engineering firm, STV, to do a preliminary layout concept and cost estimate for segments A and B. So that's from East John Street across railroad tracks at Tanktown Road. In twenty seventeen, Graylock Ridge Road was adopted into the CRTPO Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Also, remember in twenty seventeen, the East John Street Working Group identified this road as a critical piece of network to help alleviate pressure on John Street and downtown Matthews. And as recently as earlier this month, you saw Graylock Ridge Road included in the Matthews Subarea Land Use and Traffic Model. Difficulty with funding Graylock Ridge Road using our typical sources, and that's through the state, is that it's not what's called on the um, federal aid system. Those are roadways that are mostly roadways of regional significance like East John Street, McKee Road, et cetera. Therefore, most of the money from CRTPO in the state can't be used to fund this. We've seen other towns in our area be awarded uh, funding only to have to return it because the road was not eligible to be on the federally system. It, it's even harder to prove that a non-existent road by is of regional significance because it doesn't have any binding counts on it. However, earlier this year, the CRTPO announced it was taking applications for projects that utilize a unique funding source called bonus allocation. This money is made available by the state for counties that have toll projects being constructed and the money is to be spent on roadway projects that support the area of the toll project. In recent years, we saw BA dollars being used in the northern towns for the I seventy seven toll corridor. Since the I four eighty five managed lanes are considered a toll project, the state decided to make twenty six point seven million dollars available through this special funding. Now Dana worked diligently on two key points for the town with respect to these bonus allocation dollars. Uh, first of all, that the money be spent within a mile of the toll facility. And in this case, within a mile of forty five, the enabling legislation says within the county. But because of previous um, history with BA dollars, uh, she worked with uh, our partners to ensure that this would be within the forty five corridor. And secondly, that roadways that aren't on the federal aid system such as Graylock Road are eligible for this money. Even though CARPO and NC DOT wanted that criteria to stay so that they would have more flexibility with the funding. So she did a lot of work up in Raleigh, a lot of calling around and received confirmation that non-federal aid system projects are eligible for BA dollars. Furthermore, the enabling legislation for bonus allocation dollars does not stipulate that a local match is required. When CARPO tried to place a twenty percent match requirement on BA eligible projects, our mayor was able to convince the CARPO board to remove that match requirement for the bonus allocation funds. Other key points about bonus allocation funding are that the funds must be obligated within five years. Uh, since the BA funding was announced in twenty nineteen, they're your first bullet or first bubble on the left, that five year timeframe ends in June of twenty twenty four. All BA funded projects that haven't obligated their funds by then uh, are anticipated to be converted to another, another funding source that does require a twenty percent match. BA funds are reimbursement program, much like our direct attributable funds like Samuel. Uh, this means that the town would front the money and be reimbursed by NC DOT throughout the project duration. And uh, lastly, the town and the city of Charlotte are collaborating with NC DOT on another BA application and that is for the intersection of Weddington Road and the Key Road and our understanding is that the state is going to take the lead on that application. Steph is excited about the opportunity to get some funding assistance for Graylock Ridge Road Extension. We're not sure when this opportunity would ever happen again. Due to, due to the time bound nature of these funds, staff was led to the decision to investigate, investigate funding on only the segment A portion of the roadway. The coordination and cost of the CSX crossing, it, it needs more attention. Well, staff came up with three options for the board's consideration. Now, remember prior boards have deemed this section of roadway is an important piece of our roadway network and our subarea model demonstrates that more network is needed to relieve the pressure of traffic in our downtown. So first option, apply for all phases of the project with no match. Uh, if the June twenty twenty four allocation deadline is not met, then the funding will likely change to direct attributable funding, not attributing, sorry about the typo in your memo, direct attributable funding, which would require a twenty percent match from the town for the project. Based on current CRTPO estimating protocol, the match would be, you know, about eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Of course, the primary benefit of this option is the town does have to put up any dollars for the project. But it could rank lower depending on the scoring criteria uh, that CARPO uses for the projects that are applying for these funds. And there's a financial risk in this option due to the reliance on NC DOT and delivering the project in a timely manner. It will be challenging for staff to meet the required deadline. There are multiple steps to get from award in January to getting the engineering authorized. We estimate it'll take about maybe nine months to get through all of that process and then another three months to get a consultant on board. Okay, so we've already lost a year on the timeline. Remember, the calculation was done in twenty nineteen. It's now twenty twenty. And then if we think about the award in January of twenty one and then another year just to get a consultant on board. So now maybe you're beginning to see why we needed to shorten those project limits. We've CSX out. Option two, apply for funding for all phases, but the town, you can still offer a financial match. It's not required. But it would demonstrate commitment by the town for this project. So for example, a ten percent match would be four hundred and thirty thousand dollars using CARPO estimating tools. The benefit of offering the match, like I said, is to demonstrate we're invested in the project and it could make the grant application more attractive because it reduces the amount of the funding requested. The town's contribution to the project would be throughout the project duration. Remember, it's a reimbursement program. So we would pay all the bills and then request reimbursement by the state and that could be through fiscal year twenty twenty six. However, again, reliance on the NC DOT and delivering the project in a timely manner still applies to this option. So there may be this conversion where a twenty percent match would be required. If so, the town would be subject to uh, potential additional four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for total again of eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's a lot of risk. Uh, staff has grave concern about the timeline being subject to NC DOT processes. So we came up with our third option to help manage that in financial risk for your consideration. And that is, the town could pay for the design phase called preliminary engineering or PE and only seek reimbursement for the right of way construction phases. This would accelerate the project schedule in two ways. Staff could immediately upon notification of the award, request qualifications from firms and begin design earlier. Um, and two, the design timeline would be greatly reduced without NC DOT review periods in the PE process in navigating the project management portal in NC DOT. By accelerating both the authorization process and the timelines, that feels much more confident that the June twenty twenty four deadline will be met and the risk of the funding being converted to direct attributable funds is much lower. Well, preliminary engineering costs are about uh, five hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars using the CARPO recommended twenty five percent rule for construction of construction costs. The benefit of this option, it would rank higher because one project phase would be funded by the town and we would have more control um, over the project timeline. The challenge is that preliminary engineering costs could be more than five hundred and sixty thousand dollars and it would need to be allocated in this budget year. Lastly, we do need to recognize that there could still be delays and the June twenty twenty four deadline may not be met, but the risk is not nearly as high as options one and two. Any questions about this chart before we move on?
Susan?
Yes.
This, this, these are just numbers for segment A, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's East John Street to East Charles Street. Well, staff recommends um, that, you know, we don't, let me start over on that one. Again, we don't know when this type of funding with its limited requirements that make Graylock eligible is going to come around again. Um, in order to not miss this opportunity and to capitalize on the dedicated work of our mayor and Dana, the staff recommends moving forward with applying for the CRTPO Bonus Allocation Funding for Graylock Ridge Road Segment A. Uh, we need you to choose a funding option that best suits the situation at hand, given the costs and the time constraints. So again, recommended action, direct staff to pursue this bonus allocation funding with an option that you select.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Are there any questions? Excuse me. Commissioner Miller.
Thank you. Uh, Susan, is there more to cover on this topic? For example, in the report, it mentioned work on the intersection of Weddington Road and McKee Road. Uh, my question is, what needs to be done there?
That's a great question. Thank you so much for asking. So we anticipate that the NC DOT will take the lead on that one. And so because there's no match requirement, they, you know, originally they were saying they would come to the town for a match on that, but we are not anticipating that at this time. So if they decide, if the NC DOT decides they do want a match, they better come to us pretty soon. Dana's trying to get an, another final meeting with them um, on that to find out more details and make sure they're, they have everything they need from us in order to apply.
But I don't, I don't see any need for improvement. Are we sure we got the right intersection? McKee and Weddington, that intersection is fine. I go through it almost every day.
Currently, it's, it's not bad. However, when the Weddington Road interchange opens up, that intersection will see a lot of pressure. So there'll be driveway access restriction on McKee Road that will force a lot of turns in and out of that intersection to get to either of the shopping centers. And so that, that intersection does need help. Additionally, um, the curb ramps are, you know, improving pedestrian access to is really important to us and that, that intersection currently is um, not great for ADA compliance. So we would also like to see that with um, crosswalks on all four legs, great curb ramps on all four corners, extended turn queues through dual through lanes, et cetera.
And do you feel that option three is, is the preferred option from staff?
Staff is split. Uh, we have the, the money people versus the implementer people. And that's okay. And that's okay. Um, Dana and I feel like option three is the one that we can deliver. Uh, options one and two are, are fine options. That's why we're sharing them with you. It will cause, um, it'll be tough because we're, you know, we're trying to control an entity that we can't control. We're trying to control timelines that we have no control over. Uh, we will, gosh, we will work as hard as we can to ensure that we can meet that deadline and not, not be hit with a, a funding transfer. And as we've become aware, I mean, you know us, we like to come to you with lots of information. So if we get to like June twenty twenty three and it's looking dire, we will come to you and let you know, hey, it's looking dire. Okay, and so we'll, we'll keep you apprised along the way, but we've, Dana and I feel like option three, we can deliver. The financial folks feel like, you know, option two is a great deal. It shows that we are interested and it is a ten percent of the cost.
Let me uh, make a comment here. I, I appreciate Susan recognizing me for getting the, the bonus allocation match, uh, getting colleagues at CARPO to go along with it, but I was only able to do that because of the expert advice uh, from Dana and Susan on what points to bring up. So really, uh, that praise should fall on, on Susan and Dana, not me, because I was, you know, very well prepared. I have discussed this at length with, with Dana and I also believe that option three is, is the best one so that we won't have to, you know, match down the road, gives us the best opportunity. So what is word, I prefer option three.
So option three, we would take uh, five hundred and, what is it, eighty thousand dollars? I can't see uh, out of fund balance and fund it, fund, fund the preliminary engineering.
Right. Commissioner Urban, did you have a comment or questions, sir? Yeah, I mean, a couple of questions. One is timing of B and C because what is A going to gain us? I guess my question is B and C are really projected far, far out. And then two is the parkway, which you uh, labeled red or, and that's not red, it's turquoise and it said new alignment. What is the timeline of that road? Because I guess my question is, are, are we going to be building a bridge to nowhere? Because everything's going to be built further out and longer in duration? Or should there be a concerted effort to look at segment A, B and C in a different light? Um, because in the end game, if the whole thing is linked together, then the perspective of developers building out the Sportsplex quicker is greater than if we just did segment A, there's no connectivity, there's no incentive for them. So there's no infrastructure. So can you kind of talk to the, the, the protraction of the segment B, C and the other road?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, when we were, we're, we're looking at a number of twenty six point seven million dollars and you know, when we were talking about potentially funding um, this project through a, a bond referendum, that, that price was around, you know, four million or so. When we start seeking state dollars, we have to use um, state calculations and that bumped our estimate a, a lot closer to eight or nine million. And Dana really thought that that was not going to be an attractive project for CARPO to, to select. She really challenged me to keep that estimate around four and she said, you know, and we talked about it and we decided, you know, dropping that grade crossing, that is like two and a half million dollars alone for the design, construction, the flagging, everything that has to happen around that grade crossing. So yeah, I mean, we would like to see it go to Tanktown. Getting it to Charles does get some relief. Getting it to Charles does get some relief. I don't know if you can see my mouse, but you know, from John Street, you could come over. And my lines are a little bit off, but we would realign Charles Street. And this would come into Charles Street and you, and you could do a little bypass of downtown. You could access Crestdale with this without having to turn in through downtown and come back down Charles Street. So it does provide one starting point of relief and network for this area. Then of course, we would actively pursue trying to get the railroad crossing funded, continuing coordination with this. Once that section is built, remaining sections do become more attractive and we would try and find those funds. This segment C, it's tough because you're right, we don't know the timeline anymore. For Independence Point Parkway because of this, this pause that NCDOT is doing for all their projects. They won't give us any idea of when they think they can resume the projects. So right now, we just have to go with no projects are moving forward with NCDOT until further notice. So that's, you know, that's why the segment C is, is kind of like, we're not going to start this right now. Because we just don't even know when Independence Point Parkway is going to come in. That would be a road to nowhere because of that unknown there. So we feel like segment A does have logical terminology, right? That's, that's a really important point when, when taking funding. That it does provide access to and from the Crestdale community to, to get to the interchange at John Street and to start building up our network. Does that answer your question thoroughly enough?
It, it kind of does, but I mean, in some respects, I'm a little concerned that, you know, the new alignment road and getting to it's very important. But I also see an unintended consequence. I see Larry getting out of this church and getting to 45 very quickly. But I also see people going the other way. And Crestdale Road and through Crestdale becomes a, a cut through. It's connectivity, depending on how you want to look at it. But is, is that neighborhood got the infrastructure in place to handle a larger volume of traffic? For whatever duration we're talking about. So, you know, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but obviously the, you know, the key would be is to do it all one fell swoop. Get out to the Parkway, connect to the sportsplex and do it that way. It's sort of like the, the road we talked about Brian Davis this morning, or just say afternoon, whatever it was earlier. This could go on for a long, long, long period of time. And the Crestdale neighborhood, Mount Mariah Church or whatever could be inundated with traffic and the infrastructure never keeps up with it.
So I got a couple of comments I'd like to make. I would say, first of all, this could be, you know, we talked about this road for years. And ultimately it would be best to connect it all the way to Independence Boulevard. But that could be, could be 10 to 15 million dollar project. Looking for Susan's facial expressions, but you know, okay, she's shaking her head. Yes. I mean, that is serious, you know, one penny raises, well, that could be, I don't know, six cents on the tax rate. I don't know. It could be a significant hit just on that one road. And in my mind, it's like, okay, let's do this. Let's piecemeal this is we're moving the ball forward, right? And so if we get, we can get this built, this first segment and Dana's advice is don't be a pig about this. You're competing against Charlotte. You may be competing against Pineville and you're competing against DOT. So we have to come in with a reasonable project. Think we've got this reasonable project. And then we, we, you know, Independence Point Parkway has been delayed. So I, I think, John, using your thought process, we do nothing and nothing happens. And nothing gets done maybe for 15 years. And I'm not sure that's in the best interest of the town. Now, if we're trying to draw traffic away from downtown and that sub area model. This is one of the segments it said you needed to build to keep pressure off of, of John Street. But you need to, obviously you need to build the whole thing, but at least we're making incremental product progress. That's one point I want to make.
Thing that makes this attractive.
Want to make is.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll stop there. I'll talk about the money when we get to the money discussion.
Well, the, the comment I wanted to make is it's not often we get to build a road for 25 cents on the dollar. Potentially. So that's what makes it attractive to me. Mayor Pro Tim Garner.
I'd like to just speak to the point of getting around Crestdale. So I use Charles Buckley Way a lot. And then I go down Charles and then cut over to Crestdale Road. Is that the right road? Pastor Willie? So I, I see a benefit of putting this in through to Charles Street, just using that. Because people aren't necessarily going to go left. They'll also go right. Go down Tank Town Road and come out to Brigman Road. We aren't, we aren't necessarily going to be funneling that traffic through. It would also give the option to people leaving the sportsplex, which I know, you know, having seen firsthand, people speed through the neighborhood coming from the sportsplex. They'll have an option to get over to John Street and not cut through the neighborhood part as well. So I see a benefit of, of doing part A, getting it to Charles Street.
Thank you for mentioning. I was remiss in saying that it will connect to Tank Town Road and provide access to the sport, sportsplex and other option. Thank you.
Hazen, did you want to say something else?
Yeah, the other thing is about the money. You know, I hate to put, because if we go with options A or B, we are putting more stress on Susan and Dana. Who are really rock stars, you know, these two, we could, I think we could go against anybody in the state of North Carolina with Susan and Dana on our team. However, we're, we're bumping up against a fund balance that we think we're going to add a couple of hundred thousand dollars to this year. We're going to get a final number sometime mid, oh, well, estimate or whatever in mid October. But I think that undesignated fund balance, which is the free money we're talking about, is it a million dollars? Is it, is it seven million? Seven million. And, you know, we, here's, here's, here's the things, here's the other things on the radar. The property for the fire station. The, the greenway that we got an email from those folks, the, the Urbans Creek Greenway. We got an email, somebody thanking us for what a great job we're doing. Our share of that is $500,000. That's going to come due next fiscal year. We're going to talk about some property here in closed session. You know, I just, I would not recommend, if, if the board says, here's our will to spend this money on the preliminary engineer. I would not recommend we do it tonight. I would recommend we come back with you, to you guys, so you can see more of a kind of a capital improvement. You know, we don't, we do not have, we have a decent fund balance, but we will deplete it significantly here quickly. If we're not careful. And I would recommend option, the first option, I guess was A. And that was do nothing at this point, realizing if we cannot, if we cannot get this thing in go by June of 24, which is going to put a lot of pressure on our engineering staff, that then we may have to put up $800,000. That's still whatever, 20 cents on the dollar. So my recommendation would be no money at this time, 20 cents on the, well, whatever, $800,000 at, in June of 2024, if we have to.
So we, we do have a time constraint with, with CARPO, correct, Susan?
So for the application, you mean, when the decision? Yeah. So the applications are due October 16th. So that we could wait and talk about this again on the October 12th meeting. So that is a possibility. You know, the, the first meetings of the month tend to be lengthy. So just, that's why we wanted to bring it to you tonight with this big dose of information so you could digest it. But you know, I, you know, I think we're okay if you needed to take another couple of weeks to make this decision.
Commissioner Willie, did you have a comment, sir?
Yeah, I did. You know, back early this year, we were talking about the budget and I've said something and I still do. You know, it, it all comes back to, I think, I think we need to put a bond before the people. Cause that will take care of some of this suspense that we're talking about. Cause I think Rose was in that bond package that we were first anticipating. And I know Charlotte's got a bond, McHenry County's got a bond before the people. But we, we need, we need to get some help on this. And I, I truly believe we can get that bond passed to get these roles and whatever other we need to do for the town of Matthews to move that forward. And that would take some relief off our fund balance at the same time. That's, and I, I'm not in favor of postponing another two weeks. I, I've heard and I've looked at it and I, before I even heard what y'all was, I thought three C would be the better one for us to go with and still go forward there. So I, I, I heard you mayor and I heard Jeff also thinking three. And I heard Susan said, that's what's easier for her and Dana. So I, I would say let's, let's move this. I mean, it's there, we got to do something, but it did give us some time. As, as the next budget come on to, to put some funds aside to talk about the bond referendum.
Commissioner McCool.
I want to piggyback off of what Hazen said. I did some quick math. And if it's right, this would be about 8.2 ish percent of our general fund balance, of our fund balance. We had some really intense conversations during budget season where we're trying to get our budget passed about not wanting to, you know, spend a lot of that money just because we don't know where we are at, you know, COVID is still going on. We have a lot of tumultuous times. There's a lot of, you know, unknowns about the future. So I have a little bit of heartburn about it because it's just, I mean, that's to me, a significant chunk of, of the fund balance. And as Hazen said, we have a lot more coming up in the future that's going to start eating away at that. And we need to be really, really, really cautious about where we're picking and choosing our, you know, our battles kind of. So that's my two cents. I think option one or two are more favorable for me, but, but yeah, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Have any other comments, questions?
Commissioner Miller.
Thank you. This, Susan, this question may be unrelated. But in the McKee Road extension between Pleasant Plains and John Street, that is already approved and already funded and is going through engineering and right of way at this point, correct?
The McKee Road from Pleasant Plains to John Street has, is in the right of way process. That project is paused.
It's paused?
Yes.
That project is equally as important as Graylock Section A. Would this threaten or put that, are they in competition with each other?
Interesting. No, they would not be in competition with each other because even though the project is paused, the funding is there. Already for McKee Road. And this is a completely separate pot of funds.
Okay, thank you.
So what's the pleasure of the board? Do we want to table this or vote tonight? Do we want to make a motion?
I liked Hazen's idea of seeing what we're competing against on the CIP. That would be a good takeaway.
So is it consensus that would bring this back on October 12th? Mr. Blodgett?
With you. Whatever the will of the board is, we'll be happy to put together so you guys can see in theory what this project would be competing against on a fund bound, from a fund balance standpoint.
I see a lot of heads nodding, so let's do that.
Yeah.
Put on an extra pot of coffee for October 12th. That's going to be a long meeting. Commissioner Urban.
A follow up, create a question to Hazen. Segment A is running parallel to last property, is it not?
Yes.
And, and has there been, we have kicked the tires on TIFs and other type of product out there for years. Obviously, we don't know that what's going to happen on that property. But that type of funding model is still available, not only on the segment C side, but on the segment A side, is it not?
So yeah, in theory, yes, I guess the short answer would be yes, but we don't have any bio project. You know, every time he talked a lot about the property, he fusses about DOT killing the value of the property. I haven't heard any, unless he's talking to y'all, I haven't heard any progress on the property really since it's been approved.
To put to your point about option one, that buys us some time. If, if developers see that the town is committed to doing something over a period of time, that there might be some other options to sort of expedite that. They would have some skin in the game too. That might be a better win-win for us as a whole, as opposed to us just going out alone. I, I just, I, I think once Wyatt's project is, is begins to get occupied, we're going to see a lot more interest in the sportsplex area. So that whole dynamic could change and your option one buys us a little bit more time.
The, I think one of the problems, Independence Point Parkway is a critical piece.
Yes.
To make like, like this entertainment center bit work and all that. Pause may be too mild of a word for that project. It's been funded like at $80 million a year for the next four years, some, some kind of miniscule amount. That's, I think it's turned into a billion dollar project. Yeah.
Thank you. So I think we have reached consensus that we'll, we'll discuss this again on October 12th. With staff bringing back what we're competing against other, other pieces of funding that are required. Let's move on to item 11D, consider the 2021 legislative agenda. Mr. Blodgett.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the board, in your packet, we've put together some items for the board to think about. I did get a, well, so what I, you'll, you'll see three documents really. One, it kind of focuses locally on the things we're concerned about. I, I will say it does feel like the General Assembly has backed away from, I don't know, for a while they were killing towns. I mean, you know, they had legislation proposed to take the airport away away from Charlotte, to take the water system away from Asheville, just really, I would call them horrendous actions. Now, I don't know if it's they, you know, the Republicans no have, no longer have a super majority if things have died down. Or if the COVID's taken everybody, you know, taken all the airspace. But there's really a number of items mostly focusing on expanding the prepared food tax that we've talked about. You know, making sure that we stay revenue neutral, any tax reform efforts which occasionally pop up. You know, the course in sales tax, this, this legislate, this priority would support it. Not supporting that we implement it, but just support the idea that the town would have the option to talk about it and then put it to a referendum if we ever got that far. And then, and then the second thing is the incorporating the North Carolina League of Municipality, their goals. Now, I did get a notice today that they're going to have another update here in the middle of October, October 20. Well, the one I signed up for October 20th, really to revamp these, or I don't know if it's going to be revamped, but tweak them. And then the third component here is the metro mayors. And what they want to do, their legislative agenda is very, I guess I would say wide open. There's just three bullets. But you know, this has been our guiding principle in the past. When legislation comes up from the General Assembly to, if the board approves this, then we use this document to whatever, advocate for bills or not advocate for bills. Whether it's the mayor or the board or portions of members of the board would go and talk to the General Assembly about different, you know, proposed bills and, and legislation.
Any questions for Hazen regarding the legislative agenda? Commissioner Urban.
I know it's illegal or, or not done in the state of North Carolina. It's done in South Carolina, the impact fees. But I, I'd like to begin a minor conversation about how Riley expects us to, to, to balance the books, provide schools and do infrastructure projects and stuff like that, yet continue to grow, which I hope after COVID is, is a strong, robust way again. So I don't know that I would make it a state legislative priority. But I think it, it's good to sort of have that discussion because our sister state to the south does it. But the problem there is that they sort of went in a knee jerk reaction too heavily handed. And Fort Mill is way over the top and is causing actually some development, developmental stoppage because of the impact of the numbers. But I don't think we should lose sight of that unless someone can come up with a better ideas to how to balance growth and the needs of, of the town.
Thank you, John. Are there any other comments? Mayor Pro Tim Garner.
I also had impact fees on my topic to bring up. Um, I also had impact fees on my topic to bring up and, you know, I, having heard. I'm going to butcher his name, Taiwo. Jwibi with the city of Charlotte, you know, he's been talking about as the planning director there, um. Going to rally and, and asking for impact fees. I think that we need to. Decide where we stand on that and be ready to partner with them when they're ready to move forward. So we can move forward, you know. As a, as a group with greater power. The, let's see, the way the state budget was. Finalized last year, they took transit funding away. So I, I feel like there needs to be some sort of. They said it was just for one year, but you know, we should make it known somehow that we support. Better funding for transit. Um, I know that the North Carolina League of Municipalities talks about school funding, but how should we as a town address school funding? Uh, there were lots of bills last year, you know, some bills to support mental health, some to support nurses, but. I think these are all things that we need to figure out where we stand as a town. Uh, so that when they come up, you know, we can get behind our, uh, representatives and, and really advocate for. Our, uh, local public schools in that way. Also, let's see, I, I have a couple of notes, but also I think, you know, the governor has an electric car initiative. I'd like to see something. Supporting, um, moving towards. That for Matthews and I mean, I'm not sure how much weight it would, it holds in a legislative agenda, but. Just motioning that we are thinking more about sustainability is, and I think a lot of people expect sustainability as a part of. Where Matthews stands. So those are a few things.
Other questions or comments? Uh, I'd like to make a couple observations. First, uh, I, I, I do think. Having and publishing a legislative agenda is really important and we, we need to do it. Uh, it was certainly my intent and I think of the intent of this entire elected board, we, we. We came out, came together as a board to have more regular contact with our, our, uh, elected officials in Raleigh and. As Hazen said, we, we look at everything, put it in the proper context. Even if you look at all the bills and, and discussion, the legislature, it's been ninety-five percent COVID related for the last. Most of this year and, and little got done between November and December, obviously. So it's been really, um. Embroiled with COVID stuff and everything else kind of fell by the wayside. I think this topic is so important. As much as I hate to do it, I think maybe we should have another meeting, maybe not on the twelfth, maybe before the twelfth, a special meeting or something like that. To give everyone a chance to really look at this and, and weigh in and, and make sure all of our points are covered. It is, uh, my intent to invite whoever gets elected in November. Uh, in Raleigh, whoever our, uh, representatives are to come speak to us, hopefully before the end of the year, maybe at our. December meeting, uh, have whoever wins in the, the state senate and the, and. As our other representative to come speak to us where we could, uh, voice some of our concerns, but I think we need to kick this around a little more. Personally, Commissioner Miller, do you have a comment?
I was willing to make a motion, but if you want to dwell on it, um, over a longer period of time, I guess there would not. Need a note, motion.
Well, I know Commissioner Urban made a, a, a important comment regarding impact fees, uh, as did, uh. Air Pro Tim Garner, she had some other thoughts and I've talked to a couple of other people that have kicked around some things that aren't necessarily in this document. So maybe we.
Okay.
We can't keep piling everything on October twelfth if we're going to have a, you know, eight hour meeting, but maybe we can have a special meeting or. What do you think, Hazel?
Well, I, you know, the league, uh, the week of the October sixteenth. The league is having a policy meeting, uh, whatever zoom wise. And it is a good time to flesh out issues that come up and we typically. You know, adopt theirs so that when you, you know, any of us go to the legislature, we know, okay, everybody's comfortable with what the leaks adopted. And I don't know if sustainability, like I, you know, I, I was looking through the stuff. There is some stuff about transit and funding transit, but. I don't know if there's much language about sustainability, which is kind of interesting and, and is this going to come up on the radar? Of the league this year that for whatever reason wasn't on there, uh, two years ago, so. There may be value to do this at the second meeting in October, just to see if there's something that comes out of the league, um, process that. Kind of lifts up new ideas.
That might give us some, uh, breathing room and give everybody opportunity to kick this around some more because I. I really value everybody's opinion, uh, on this board that we have now and I want to make sure everybody's, uh, ideas are considered, fully considered and. You know, legislative agenda is really important. Where do we stand as a town? What is the consensus of this board? What do we think's important? And I think perhaps, uh, although staff did a great job pulling together what we have so far, there's probably some additional things we want to tweak and. Uh, I'm in agreement regarding impact fees. That's something I'd like to see. Local control always remains paramount. Um, we've, we've been looking at that and, and as, uh, Hazen said. We haven't seen them take away much local control, but that's because they've been totally enmeshed in, in COVID. Maybe they haven't had opportunity to do that, but we need to make sure that. Uh, I like to say what little bit of local control we still have, that we don't lose any more of it because we've lost quite a bit in previous administrations, so. Why don't we do that? Let's, uh, reconsider this at our second meeting in October and, and come up with something. Where everybody really has an opportunity to study this and maybe add any additional points and then we can meet and discuss it as a group.
Good.
Sound good?
Yeah.
All right.
Uh, you want to, do you want to do that at a six o'clock meeting before the meeting and talk about this?
We could. It's not a bad idea.
Idea.
My thirty or a six o'clock meeting on the second, like, second meeting in October. I don't believe anything's planned there yet.
That way we won't have to debate it during the main meeting. We'll have already, uh, ironed out the points.
Yeah, and, and feel free to, uh, to, to send ideas back and forth to one another and to Hazen and Becky and, and, and get their opinions on it, but, uh. You know, ju- just about everything everybody said I think are important and we can certainly add them to. It's a consensus to, to our legislative agenda. I just have, well, I had two things in my mayor's report. I, again, I want to go back to the cost kids. I hope, uh, everybody will. Will go to neighborhoodassist.com and vote for cost kids. They're so close to getting this very nice grant. And, uh, we would, we would like to see them get that. They're just a little bit out of the top forty right now, so. Uh, literally takes only about sixty seconds to vote. You can vote all ten, ten votes a day, but you can vote them all at once. It's a really quick thing, so please tell your friends and family to do that. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about is.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion? Charlie, there you go. Thanks. Okay, Charlie put his stuff on me, yeah.
Maureen came to me and asked if I and or the board, uh, would like to make a video regarding voting. And I, I think that's a great idea. Uh, I know Commissioner McCool's already done, done one on his own. Just want to remind this group how important voting is if we hearken back to two thousand. When Al Gore lost the Electoral College in Florida. By point zero zero nine percent in the Florida vote, almost six million people voted and he lost by five hundred and thirty-seven votes. So. Everybody's vote's important. There's certainly examples on, on either side, whatever your political affiliation is, we're supposedly nonpartisan, but. I think, uh, getting the will of the people out there, uh, is good for, for all political. Parties, all political affiliations, getting as many people to vote as possible and. I'll, I'll remind everyone also that a few years ago, uh, Chris Melton and I ran in Matthews and got the exact number of votes exactly. So every, which is amazing. So every vote is important. Um, and so I, I've thought about some videos I've seen, one I saw this weekend that I thought was kind of humorous was the NFL one. I don't know if you've seen that where they say, hey, I'm only going to try sixty percent of the time and. Pete Carroll said, I'm going to try to win sixty percent of my games and that, because that's how many people voted in the last presidential election, sixty percent. Anyway, make a long story short, if anyone would like to join me in making some sort of, uh. Public service announcement, encouraging people in Matthews to get out to vote. Uh, please send myself or Maureen an, an email, let us know and we'll do something fun. Again, totally, um, nonpartisan, just encouraging people to go out and exercise their right to vote. It, it's very troubling, I think, to all of us as elected officials, again, when we see how few people vote. In, in our election, it was just pathetic, you know, fewer than, fewer than one in five registered voters bothered to vote in our election. That's pretty sad. And there was not going to be, you know, perhaps as, as many people voting in the presidential election as, as we would like to see, so. Anybody would like to participate, please let Maureen or myself know in the next, uh, few days and we'll. Come up with something, anybody's ideas fine, just encouraging people to go out and vote. So that's all I have on the mayor's report. So I'll move on to the attorney's report. Probably sounds like Darth Vader tonight for some reason. Hazen, do you have a town manager's report?
Yes, sir. No report.
All right, we're going to take about a five minute break and then we'll, uh, log back in for our closed session. So. That's correct, right?
What you need to do in public, you need to go ahead and vote to go into, uh, executive session.
I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
For the purpose of, uh, uh, acquiring our property on GS one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, eighty-five.
Commissioner Urban was going to make that exact.
Exact, that was exactly my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Urban. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner McCool, roll call vote, Commissioner Bland. Commissioner Whitley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Garner.
Yes.
Commissioner Urban.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner McCool.
Yes.
My vote yes. So again, we'll take about a five minute recess and then everybody log back in. I believe Lori sent out that, uh, link, correct? Everybody has it?
That's correct.
Let's, uh, log back in in five or six minutes and then we'll, we'll start executive session. Sound good?
That's good.
See you in a minute.